It is.
It is.
That in itself says something. All right, let's do this over. Six o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Present.
Councilmember Tate?
Present.
Councilmember Stowe?
Yes.
Mayor Flores?
Present. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Wyrock, and please remain standing for the invocation or a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come forth and do an invocation? If not, please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest whether on the agenda or not. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. I'd like to emphasize the three-minute period per speaker. It will be adhered to so that the city council can, in an orderly fashion, proceed with the scheduled decision-making and responsibilities for this evening. If there's anyone that would like to come forth, please do so now and state your name and address for the record.
Greg Sheldon, 88 North Wilford Drive. You know, I've been with this whole process going back to when I was on this council ten years ago, and we've already had selections of the seven that applied, the wholly local ones finished in the bottom three, which is really uncanny to me. The company that did our evaluations has now, subsequent to that, been hit with numerous lawsuits and fired by number cities for, of all things, manipulating the scoring process. And here we are, doing it again. I think this process has been flawed from the beginning. I've sent all of you a lot of information. I know you got it. Send it to the attorney, too. Right now, there's a big debate about eliminating the amount of licenses for jurisdiction. It invites corruption because of everybody trying to game the system, that's the quote. I think that what you should do is what I've done, said from day one, give everybody a license, offer it to everybody. It's what Farmersville did. They had five, only two got built. Let the market decide. Instead, we're picking the winners and losers, and the people that are savvy know how to game the system, and that's who you get. I've had former councilmen tell me they felt like the two they've already appointed were the worst decisions they made because they felt like, in their endeavor to try to keep it local and make it even, it was gamed in a way where they had no choice but to pick the worst candidates. That's my own opinion. So what I say, what you should do is open it up. Anybody that paid their $10,000, offer them a license, you know, and then see what happens. What's the worst that can happen? We can have seven of them, great. The market's not going to support them. They'll go out of business. Problem solved. But if we keep going down this path of allowing out-of-town interests to manipulate our process, basically what happens is the city of Porterville comes up short again. No other jurisdiction did this, nor did other jurisdiction have problems like this. And here we are, doing it over again. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth?
I was late. I just got here. I just spilled water all over me. My name's Ray Dean Strawn, 54 West Sedaner Avenue, Porterville, California. You know my feeling about this whole process clear back to 2019. This process today is uncalled for, and it should have never happened. You had your wholly locally-owned participant, he had already been qualified, pre-qualified, and you turned him down and opened it up again so that two more could come in. I certainly hope the city council gets the one that they want and not the one that's qualified from a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray Dean. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll now move into scheduled matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. The meeting this evening was called at the specific scheduling of the city council from its meeting on October 4th for the purposes of conducting the interviews for the qualified applicants to the request for proposals for a wholly locally cannabis business operating permit for retail dispensary. At its meeting on October 18th, the council approved the recommendation of its ad hoc committee, which is comprised of council members Tate and Wyrock, in regard to the interview process. The order of interviews will be chosen via random method, could be by lottery, and then the number of interview participants is limited to not more than three people per application. And if participating virtually, the backgrounds of the interviewees shall be plain with no promotional branding or advertisement for the company in the backdrop. The names of the applicants moving forward to this evening's interview process in alphabetical order are Bloom Farms, Main Street Apothecary, and Uncle Green. For the first part of tonight's interviews, applicants are expected to conduct a 15-minute uninterrupted narrated presentation. Presentations may include a PowerPoint or similar-formatted visual aid, which were required to be emailed to the designated city staff by not later than 4:00 p.m. last Thursday, October 20th. The visual aids and/or handouts are limited to a total of three pages, including a one-page executive summary and two pages of illustrations of the interior and exterior of the proposed business. It's requested that the applicants focus as part of their presentations on the following elements, that they introduce the proposed business and explain the local ownership structure, describing the primary qualities of their business brand, identify all local and non-local representatives and managers, describe the qualities that set their business apart from the rest, describe the professional qualifications of all applicants, representatives, and managers, provide a three-year pro forma or projection illustrating all projected startup and general operating costs, estimated gross revenues, and anticipated taxes to be generated, describe their approach to operating a safe and successful cannabis business in the city of Porterville, describe their understanding of the city's community benefits objectives, and outline their proposed community benefits offerings and ideas. At the conclusion of that 15-minute presentation, there were four questions that were approved by the city council, and there's four members sitting here this evening, so if you wish to each select one to give. The first question, and there would be an additional 15 minutes allowed for each applicant in response to these questions, the first was that ask each of these applicants to describe their local business experience outside the cannabis industry and their local employee count, as well as experience with audited payroll. Describe the applicants and local representatives' experience inside the cannabis industry, and what is their experience in the cannabis industry, and who will be their cannabis supplier, and how do you or will you stay current and in compliance with all cannabis business legal requirements and avoid the corruption issues that have arisen in other jurisdictions. Describe your prior experience with community benefits programs and detail any proposed volunteer services, in-kind donations and/or charitable donations. And fourthly, if you commence business in the city, where do you see your business in two years and in five years in terms of economic development? The scoring of these interviews, each of the members of council have provided a maximum of, it was 50 points, 10 points per council member. We're without a council member this evening, so I guess there's only 40 points that's available. And so for each applicant, up to 10 points is allowed in that process. The council may consider a proposed point scale just as a guide in terms of looking at how to assign points for award or deduction of points. So one to four points out of that 10. If the applicant failed to adequately respond to the council's questions, five to seven points. In response to council's questions, meeting expectations, and eight to 10 points where if response to council's questions are exceptional and far exceed expectations. At the conclusion of this evening's interviews, each council member shall provide their individual scores to the city attorney via email at the conclusion, and no later than a half hour after the end of the meeting, which the resulting scores will be presented to the council for consideration award at its meeting, next meeting next Tuesday on November 1st. So recommendations, the city council will conduct the applicant interview process. With the interviews, interview questions, it was noted that the council, if a member wished to bring a separate question than the four that were previously adopted, that they could bring that to the meeting this evening and request that the council consider that, and that could be additional questions asked this evening. With that, staff's happy to answer any questions or provide any further information.
Does council need any clarification? If so, please state. Do you have any clarification or any questions to ask before we begin the interview? Please.
Honorable Mayor, just a quick clarifying question on that last paragraph, that the result scores to be presented to the council for consideration of award at its meeting on November 1. Consideration equals, not necessarily the highest score automatically receives, move in a second and an approval? Okay.
It's the determination of the city council.
Thank you. No other questions.
And for clarification, not only because, in Part Two of the interview, it states 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes total for the four questions.
Or however many questions.
That's what I wanted clarified.
And that was just for guidelines. I mean, certainly if the council wishes to spend additional times, then it's welcome to do so.
Okay.
That's the time set aside for the council. The first part is time set aside for the applicant.
And thank you very much. And this is the time, if a council member has a question, to ask it during that part. After the four questions have been asked, is this?
I think that's probably, right. So I'll.
Yeah, I mean, yes. It's up, you guys are deciding how you'd like to do this. What we would propose, what we would suggest, though, is if there is another question that's not already listed, that you guys go ahead and discuss that ahead of time so that you can ask every applicant that question.
This is why I'm bringing it to the table, so that it would be clarified now. And if a council member has brought a question, this is where you put it forth.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Mayor, I have two questions that I brought with me tonight that I'd like to have the council consider approving for me to ask. The first question is, do you currently, as the owner, do you currently supervise five or more employees? And the second question is, can you provide evidence of completing the supervisory two-hour training mandated by the state of California for yourself within the last two years prior to tonight's meeting by next Tuesday's city council meeting? And those are the only two questions that I have in addition to the ones from the minutes of October 24th. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has those questions, any question to be brought forth?
I have a question for consideration from the council. Each candidate is wholly local. Are the products, the cannabis products, a trade name local, or is, where do you get your product?
Okay.
I think that's one of the questions that's already contained in the question.
In the four questions, that's already in there.
Okay, thank you.
So in question number two, who will be your cannabis supplier? And how are they going to stay current and in compliance with all cannabis business legal requirements? If that meets the intent.
That would cover part of it. What I was wondering is, the company's name or the business name, is it associated with, like cannabis franchises?
So any association with cannabis franchises?
I just have a clarification for Councilmember Tate. So the question that you're asking is, is there any association to any company franchise? Councilmember Stowe, do you have a question for? I don't either. I do not have a question. So does council accept the questions on behalf of Councilmember Wyrock and Councilmember Tate?
Can I just get clarification on Councilmember Wyrock's second question?
Please.
Are you talking about supervisory training? Are you talking about discrimination, harassment prevention training, the required training for supervisors?
California SB 1343, yes.
Okay. I'll ask the question again. Are you okay with the questions? All right. So now that there are the four questions.
Well, there would be seven now.
Yes. Okay. This is what I'm gonna do. I will take the first question, Councilmember Stowe the second, Councilmember Tate take the third one, and then ask your question after that, the one you've had asked to request. And Councilmember Wyrock, you will take number four and ask your two questions. So it will be me, Stowe, Tate, and Wyrock. And then we will proceed with the lottery draw?
By whatever means you wish to select an order. You could do it alphabetically or?
How does council wish to proceed? It's very easy right here. How does council wish to proceed?
Let's draw a lottery.
Lottery draw. It is. Okay.
All right. Get to write them on a piece of paper and choose from the hat.
I have a pencil.
And please have someone else besides council do the lottery draw. Someone else.
Get the recorder. Ask Charles.
Ask someone from the audience to do the lottery draw.
Let the recorder do it. Let the editor do it. Yeah, yeah. He can know. That's called transparency in the press.
Maybe go alphabetical order. So can you have Uncle Green?
Thank you. Number one would be Bloom Farms, number two, Uncle Green, number three, Main Street Apothecary. And I'm gonna ask a question of council members. Have any of you engaged in any conversation with any of the applicants before tonight?
Madam Mayor, I have. After our recent council meeting, I did meet the individuals from Bloom Farm, thanking them for their presentation at the podium. As is customary after most city council meetings, when I greet people that come to the podium. We didn't discuss the merits of the application request for proposal or tonight's vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else has had any conversation before tonight? All right, then. We will now begin the interview process. And this is where it's the 15-minute uninterrupted narrated presentation. So we will begin with Bloom Farms.
Can I hand you just paper outlets just for you all to follow along? It's not a PowerPoint. Bloom Farms, Porterville-born, Porterville-raised, your local family. Our local and non-local representatives and managers, Darren Garrett, myself, Maria Marrero, George Boyajian, and Levi Garrett. Qualities that set our business apart from the rest, locally-known philanthropy for the past 35 years, third-generation local business ownerships for 100 years, 20 years law enforcement background, 18 years of real estate sales, 15 years of excessive cannabis business experience, local social equality pioneers, landmark location, the First National Bank, building built in 1905, we all know it as Bob Phil's Jewelry, substance abuse education expert. Our professional qualities of all the applicants, representatives, and managers are Darren Garrett was born and raised in Porterville, started at kindergarten through 12th in the Porterville School District. Darren began working with his father in a family-owned roofing company, passed down through the generations over 100 years. Since the takeover by Darren, he has expanded the roofing company into a major commercial project, servicing not only Porterville and the rest of California, but in Nevada as well. Being an entrepreneur, Darren has operated multiple sister companies, providing jobs and career opportunities, not just in Porterville, but everywhere he's gone. Darren currently holds Global Roof Maintenance, a Class C 39 license, Jake Roofing and Coating, a Class C 39 license, both roofing in California and Nevada, Elevated Energy and Construction in California. He holds a General Engineer Contractor Class A license, a General Building Contractor Class B license. Darren asserts an influential presence with business owners throughout the city of Porterville. His relationships with Verias, Varia, Varias Local Community Organization will positively serve with Bloom Farms' community benefits goals for the city of Porterville. I myself, I'm Darren's aunt. I was a Porterville native, retired law enforcement officer, having served as a correctional deputy with Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department for 20 years. Through my time as a correctional deputy, I've learned how to enhance interpersonal skills, ability to easily build rapport, critical thinking skills, ability to handle extreme work conditions with ease. After retiring from the Santa Clara County Department, I moved back to Larrick County in 2001, where I began my new career in real estate. George is married with three children. George is the founder of a group of companies that he personally built each operation. He is one of a handful of leading professionals in the cannabis industries. From 2009 to now, he has over 12 years of professional experience in all types of cannabis business, including distribution, retail manufacturing, delivering, and cultivation. With 420 College, he has facilitated seminars, consultations throughout California, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, Arizona, Illinois, and Florida, providing information to thousands of entrepreneurs on cannabis business, organizations, licensing, and operations. He has been featured in the local news numerous times throughout the last decade as an expert in the cannabis business operations. 420 College has become a recognized brand in the industry as a premier cannabis education platform. Levi Garrett is a Porterville native and Darrenson, born and raised in Porterville. He served in the Army shortly after high school for four years. He received training in accounting, shipping, and receiving in the military. Levi's passion for cultivation and his experience will be a great asset as a delivery service manager. Our approach to operating a safe and successful cannabis business in the city of Porterville, we have a secure brick building, an open floor plan, local employment, local events and community engagement, drug abuse education, and social equality. Our understanding of the city's community benefit objective, since we are and have already been local philanthropists working for the betterment of our community, our community benefit revolves around Porterville's community objective. Bloom will donate 1.5 to the city of Porterville Benefit Community Programs. We will work closely with the Chamber of Commerce, the community leaders, to drive community engagement and local business assistance. Our proposed community benefit offering idea, intended on identifying and prioritizing community needs, the Community Blooms Initiative will specifically be developed and implemented to work cohesively with the city and its council members, with the purpose of affording the city of Porterville with a community benefit program. Community Blooms Initiative will desire to present and enhance economic environments for the city of Porterville. Additionally, the proposed retail facility will generate substantial tax benefits for the city of Porterville. Bloom Farm is generate, will generate approximately 70,000 per year in tax revenue for the city from our facility. Ideas, community involvement, outreach, workshops, customer education events. George? Do you want to add something?
Hi, my name is George Boyajian. I've been in the cannabis industry since about 2008. Started a handful of companies throughout distribution, cultivation, and so on. Our main focus is going to be our Porterville community. The members of our community that are going to benefit from our business are going to be those people that are mainly, that are left out of the cannabis industry because the number of licenses are limited. A lot of these folks have been in Porterville, operating illegally, in some cases for more than decades. And so we want to be able to help those people in transition into legal markets somehow through our social equity engagement with our community. One thing that we, one of the biggest benefits that we'll bring to our cities that One thing that we, one of the biggest benefits that we bring to our cities, that we bring a program, it's called Social Equity, which is intended on people that were harmed by the war on drugs. We recognize that City of Porterville's initial RFP did not include any requirements for social equity. But I myself, I've been an expert in this field for the past twelve years. I've secured a number of social equity permits for folks that have been harmed by the war on drugs in cities like Los Angeles and Fresno, for example. And so we intend on helping all those folks transition into a legal market and stop operating illegally. Furthermore, we're going to do consumer education events, educating folks on the various different cannabis brands and various different effects that cannabis has on a person's body, as well as underage cannabis use. So we want to help educate children in the dangers of drug abuse. That's what she was referring to. I myself, I'm a substance abuse counselor as well. I've been doing substance abuse counseling over the past two years already. And so I want to bring that to the table to help our kids in Porterville, help the folks that are abusing drugs, and help them recover from these types of abuses. And so this kind of, we're kind of early in our thing. If you guys have any questions, Dan, would you like to add something? If you guys have any questions, we'll take them.
Did you have something to say, Mr. Garrett?
Go ahead.
No, did you have anything to say on the presentation?
Oh, I would just like to say that, you know, I love the city of Porterville, and I have a big heart for people. You know, when we first bought our building, we bought it in the intent, it was in the middle of downtown Porterville to help the local businesses down there. That would require people to get out of their cars, to walk by the local businesses that are hurting in downtown Porterville to get to our facility. And we just want what is best for our town and for the city. I mean.
One of the biggest, because one of the questions in here was, what sets us aside from any other business that's applying for the permit here? One of the important aspects that we bring to the city is that all of our, are the members of Bloom Farms and all the employees and officers are all from local Porterville area. Darren himself has been doing philanthropy in the city of Porterville over the last thirty-five years. We didn't have to wait for cannabis to arrive to the city of Porterville for us to become philanthropists. Darren has been and is currently involved in these activities as we speak. He's a third-generation, a local business owner, over the past one hundred years, going back to his grandpa. Maria has over twenty years of law enforcement experience, she brings that to the table. And one of the biggest draws, one of the biggest things that sets us apart is our location. Dan was able to secure the building with the First Bank, First National Bank, right down the street from here. And so we want to make that the landmark that it is, and want to revitalize it and help the local businesses as well. We aren't the only people that are going to benefit from this, from this, from this activity. We're going to help the local business owners, such as, we'll do events in our, in our location, draw people down there, which is going to help spread, you know, it's going to help the other local businesses as well. So people are going to shop with us, they're also going to shop with the local businesses. So it's going to help overall the community. Specifically, you know, we, our programs of engaging our community in substance abuse programs and teaching them, educating about abusing drugs and how negative that impacted our community, hopefully we'll be able to make a bigger impact in our city than just moving into Porterville just to sell weed. That's not our intent. Our intent is not to grow rich on this, or for this business, our intent is to help bear our community. That's our number one goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please.
I do have a question. Couple of questions, actually. Is that okay? Yes. Yes, I just have, Ms. Morrell, you mentioned that, I know Darren and Levi are Porterville natives. Are you and George Porterville natives, and do you live here now?
I am a Porterville native. I was born in Hamford, but raised here in Porterville. I came to Porterville when I was about six, seven months old. I lived in the Woodville Labor Camp, raised around all of Porterville. I started kindergarten in Vendalia. I went there first and second, I believe, and then I was in Terabella for a short while. I was at Sunnyside Elementary, back to Woodville, graduated from Woodville Elementary, and then I graduated from Minatchee High School. I attended Porterville College. I was hired my first, when I turned twenty-one, I walked into the Porterville Police Department, and I spoke to the, to the city chief, and he told me that, why would I want to be a policeman? But I walked in there as a mom, a new mom, a single mom, and I tell him I want to be a police officer. He sponsored me and he sent me to college, and he paid for my first classes so I could be a police officer. Being in such a small town and being a female, this was when there were no females. I was here for my first year. I transferred to Santa Clara County. Pay was great, everything was different, I raised my children, but when I retired, I came home. I do live here in Porterville now and have been here since twenty nineteen. I own a home in Visalia. When I retired in two thousand and one, I bought a property in Visalia. But I've been here in Porterville since twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
As far as I go, I live in Fresno, actually, but I'm not part of the ownership structure. So the owners, the Bloom Farms, there's two owners, which is Darren and Maria. That, I've known Darren for about three years, we have a relationship with, like I said, I do cannabis consultations and training, so he first hired me to help him train on cannabis dispensary and delivery service operations.
Pleasure.
And that's, that's where I became in contact with Darren over the past three years. I'm a Valley native, I guess you could say, which is about an hour north of me, hour twenty, you know, city in Fresno, but again, I'm not part of the ownership structure. And all the employees, by the way, that we will hire, we want to focus on Porterville. And whoever does not qualify for such employment, for example, like a manager or whatnot, we would train those folks through my program, the four twenty college cannabis business training program, to get them prepared to take such jobs. So again, I'm the only person that's from, but I'm from the Valley, so hopefully you don't hold that against me.
Thank you.
The other question is, are you guys in the old Bob Phil's building?
Yes.
Someone said First National Bank.
Go ahead, and ask Councilmember Tate, related to what they presented here.
So I'm listening to what your role will be. Mm-hmm. So you'll be like a human resource manager or?
Ma'am, I will be the GM, general manager of the business. I will oversee with Maria. Maria is actually going to be hands-on, everyday manager. So I'm more of a hired consultant, management, I'm not going to be running the business every single day, that's going to be left up to, you know, our retail managers. But I'm going to be also compliance manager as well. I'm going to make sure that the business is running according to the regulations, City of Porterville set forth, and also the state of California. And so that's going to be my job, to make sure everything's ran right. That's going to be my main purpose.
So you'll be doing some quality assurance?
One hundred percent. I currently, what I do right now, okay, let me, what I do right now, currently, I'm operating a social equity cannabis distribution facility called Remedy Association out of the city of Los Angeles. I've been doing that over the past three years. And so one of the questions in here is where we're going to get cannabis from, what distributors we're going to work with. So over the past three years, since I've, that's what I do currently, is operate a distribution facility. I have relationships throughout the state of California. As far as local, not to the city of Porterville, because right now, currently, Porterville does not have any cultivation operations or manufacturing operations, so we can go and engage those companies in contracts to bring products here locally. But my relationships are vast, and they basically work throughout the state of California. I work with big brands, I also work with small mom and pop brands. Main focus, my main focus as business model has been to work with local, small brands, but I understand that our consumers in Porterville, you know, throughout, they want to, you know, experience the best quality and what everybody else in the state is doing. And so we'll be able to bring in those outside big distributors, outside big manufacturers, and get products from them locally here. So it's going, also going to be my job, is to help supply our facility with the much-needed, you know, licensed and compliant cannabis. Thank you.
So essentially, Bloom Farms is locally owned, but the product is not locally grown? Correct?
Let me answer that. In the cannabis fields is, first of all, like he said, we don't have cultivators here. We don't have, Porterville has any cultivation farms that are licensed and approved, so I cannot buy that local. But it's sort of like opening a liquor store. Your liquor stores come with Hennessy, they come with Budweiser, they come with Corona, they come with every kind of bottle from out, not just locally brewed. The breweries are coming in. As you release licensing, as it opens up, we can buy local. There is some local farms that have now started cultivating in Woodlake. That's probably is the closest cultivation that we can get. But just like a liquor store that have brand market, every dispensary that you walk into will have the same products, they come from the same vendors. We are tied in to talk to, but remember, we do not have a license, so we've only been talking, making contact, and getting ready. But we have still state licensing, we have city licensing, we want to be right before we start selling a product. And the product is the same that's available to all, all vendors, all dispensaries.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions with regard to the presentation? Because we have to consider the other two that are coming up who have been allotted the same amount. Thank you so much.
Well, actually, I think you, for, right.
For them.
So the mayor, you would lead off with number one?
Your question's number one.
All right. Here we go. All right. Describe the applicant's local business experience outside the cannabis industry and the local employee count, as well as experience with audited payroll.
Okay. I'm Darren Garrett, started Jake's Roofing in nineteen ninety in Porterville. We have employed as high as forty people at one time. We currently employ twelve full-time, and out of the twelve employed, eight have been employed with Jake's Roofing for over twenty-five years. We currently have seven satellite offices in California and Nevada. We carry a C thirty-nine, a A general engineering license, a B license in California, a roofing license in Nevada, and a B contractor's license in Nevada as well. In the past five years, I've opened up another company as Elevated Energy and Construction, Global Roof Maintenance, which is employees and other six full-time employees. Were rated A-plus at the Better Business Bureau, and never had a complaint with the Contract of State Licensing Board in thirty-two years. And I've had thirty-two payroll audits. So in this business, you get, you get a payroll audit every year. From workman's comp, they audit your payroll every year. So I've experienced thirty-two payroll audits. And in addition to me and my wife, Celeste Garrett, we own Garrett Investments, and we supply low-priced rent homes for the fam, for families in Porterville.
Councilmember Stott?
Yeah, thirty-two years of payroll audits. We get audited every year as a construction company for our payroll.
Describe your local representative's experience inside the cannabis industry, which you guys probably just answered, but.
Honorable Councilmember, I kind of went over that, and I said that, if you'd like me to go over it, I'd love to.
No, I mean, that's okay, but there's another part of this is, what is your experience in cannabis industry, and who will be your cannabis supplier, which you already gave that, and how do you, and will, and will you stay current in compliance with all cannabis business legal requirements and avoid the corruption issues that have risen over the jurisdictions?
We're planning to implement internal audit systems for distribution cannabis that we receive from distributors outside. We're going to do monthly audits of all of our books and papers internally, before we hand them out to the BCC or, you know, anybody wants to look at it. We also have a, we're going to have a full-time assurance manager, who's, quality assurance manager, who's going to make sure that all the cannabis is adequately packaged properly before it's being sold, labeled properly before it's being sold, make sure that it doesn't go to outside where it's intended to go, basically, to prevent non-diversion of cannabis, so we're going to do audits as far as those as well. Run a very tight ship. I'm a contractor myself, so I got my contractors, this is twenty years ago, I didn't even tell you guys that much. So I'm used to being taxed audits and stuff myself in my current businesses as well, so that's how we're going to make sure cannabis and everything stays compliant.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Tate?
Describe your prior experience with community benefit programs and deal, detail any proposed volunteer services, in-kind donations, and/or?
Well, I could write five pages on that, but I just wrote one. Since two thousand and five, we have been feeding the homeless every year. In two thousand and twenty-two, we've had two hundred and fifty homeless people in one food drive. We have sent and financed nineteen people to the par center, people that were on drugs. Jake's Roofing and Coatings paid for them to go to the par center.
How many?
Huh?
How many?
Nineteen, yes. We have done river cleanups with the par center and with the portable rescue mission. So what we would do is go in and hire people from the par center and pay them, and from the portable rescue mission, and pay them to go out and do river cleanups, along with the guys that work for me. We loaned our building, Bob Phil's Jewelry Building, to the fire department for training at no cost to the city for three months. I have assisted the El Grino Foundation for over thirty years in volunteering, providing transportation when needed, picking up and delivering food distributions, assisting with homeless, feeding and clothing, helping people get to recovery homes and supporting them during their stay. I coached Little League teams for three years, won local Hero of the Year in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twelve. In the past year, we have sent four men to a Christian rehabilitation center in San Jose. One of those guys is, all of them have done very well. One of them has graduated the center, Christian facility, and he's in Bible college now, so his life just completely changed. We've donated over eighteen thousand to the Portable Crisis Center since two thousand and five. Donated a hundred sleeping bags to the homeless in two thousand and twenty-one. And this is probably one of the biggest accomplishments of my life, and I'm sure you all are aware of the building. It's on the corner of Lowry and Morton. That building has been a church since I was a kid. And a developer out of Visalia had bought the building, and they were going to tear it down. And I met with him, and I ended up buying the building and from him, which cost me a lot more from what I previously could have bought it for. And we donated six hundred thousand dollars to the Move of God Ministries. That ministry now is about a hundred people, about a hundred people per service now are going to that ministry. And that's really good for the community, because God does change people's lives. Jake's Roofing has given away twelve free roofs to senior citizens in the last thirty-two years, seniors that could not afford to pay for it. We just gave them the roofs. Donated toys every year. Donated toys every year to the women's shelter on Christmas. Last year, we also donated $3,000 in Christmas toys and bicycles to the Woodville community. And in the past six years, we paid for eight funerals for families that couldn't afford to bury their loved ones. We paid for them. And everything I'm telling you here is factual, and it can be double-checked, and it can be proven. It's a fact. And I just put on there, this is a, this is a lifestyle for me. This is, this things that I do for the community. And I like to do good things for people that are in need. One thing I'd like to say is Jake's Roofing would have never been successful if it wasn't for the support of its community here in Porterville. I mean, if the community did not support us, we wouldn't be as successful as we are today. So we do like to get back to our communities. And those are just some of the things that we have done for the community over the last 20 years. But like I said, I could go back to my father, my mother, my grandma, my grandpa, they used to do things like that for the community as well. So we just kind of picked up the torch and kept it going that way.
Okay. Councilmember Wyrock?
Oh, did she have another question?
Did you ask your question?
I think essentially they answered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Question four. If you commence business in the city, where do you see your business in two years and in five years in terms of economic development?
One of the important aspects of us staying in business is working with our local community, local other cannabis businesses, for example. Hopefully, sooner than later, City of Porterville will open up to other cannabis businesses such as cultivation facilities and manufacturing facilities, distribution facilities. Eventually, once those things open up, we like to get into those things as well. And so we want to grow our business. We want to grow our, not just the consumer base, but basically our abilities to help out our community. The more we can do, the more people we can employ. And so we want to be able to give back to the community just in a way of just, you know, simple providing jobs for people. So we want to grow our business into not just the retail and delivery aspect that we're applying for currently, but into the other, you know, into other cannabis businesses as well. Also, we want to engage our community in, you know, how we can improve our business. And so we'll have various, you know, meetings with our neighbors, our neighbor businesses, and also our neighboring community members and get feedback from them as far as what we can do, how we can improve our business. And so we want to grow our business in a way that it's going to grow with the City of Porterville. Again, we're not just trying to get rich here, as you can see, in a small city, we want to do more than just come here. So we want to be able to grow with our city. And so two to three years, God willing, hopefully if everything goes great, and we can, our economy will stabilize more, and, you know, we'll be able to apply for more licenses and be able to grow our business within our City of Porterville. I don't think Darren, and we're not looking too forward to moving outside the city, getting other permits somewhere else, for example. This is a family-owned business in the City of Porterville for Porterville. And so our main focus is going to be here. We don't have licenses in Darren, for example, that doesn't have licenses in other areas as well. We just want to focus on the city. So hopefully that works. Do you want to have a follow-up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two other questions. I guess this would be for you, Darren. Do you currently supervise five or more full-time, part-time, or temporary employees?
20.
20?
Yeah.
And can you provide evidence of completion of the supervisory two-hour training for yourself within the last two years prior to today's date and 6:00 PM tonight at next Tuesday's city council meeting? That's training in regards to SB 1343? Sexual harassment in the workplace?
Yeah, we've had that, I've had that training.
So you could provide some document by next Tuesday's?
We're not required to have that training as contractors, but I've read that training online. I've never gotten a certificate for that training.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. That concludes your questions. That concluded your questions?
Those were the seven that you had.
Okay.
But we don't have a problem with taking that training class.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we will go, now we will go on with Uncle Green.
I think he had something.
Oh, did you have something?
We, in the handout that Maria gave you guys, we have our capital startup requirements as well as our three-year performance in there.
We saw that in here.
It wasn't a question, but I didn't get any questions for it.
No, no.
Did I have any questions?
No, because I'm going to state it publicly. We had the opportunity to review the proposals. And so we gathered a lot of information that was brought to the table then.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
One more question. We, I think we emailed in the pictures of what the facility would look like? Could we get those on the screen or?
We're not aware that we received anything other than your proposal. We didn't receive anything, we didn't receive anything for presentations, correct? From Bloom? No?
No.
Okay.
But it was in your proposal package.
Yeah, yeah.
That was in, that was in there. So that, just so that you're aware that there was, we looked at it, okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we will go on with Uncle Green.
Hello, honorable mayor and city council. I think we have a presentation that we provided. If that could be displayed.
We need to.
Okay, great. So my name is Todd Winter. I'm counsel, legal counsel, compliance counsel for Uncle Green, the project that's going to be located at 198 North Second Street here in Porterville, just a block or so away from here, actually. And it's a really exciting project. It will be 100% locally owned, as per the requirements in the RFP. It will be vertically integrated, which we can discuss more a little bit further in the presentation. And perhaps most importantly, will be minority and woman-owned. So a really exciting project for the City of Porterville to partner with a minority and woman-owned business in cannabis, which as somebody with 15 years' experience in this industry, is vitally needed in our industry. So again, this is the project, Uncle Green Dispensary, 198 North Second Street. My name is Todd Winter again, attorney, and I have 15 years' experience in this industry. I started representing clients in the industry back in 2008, prior to legalization, but during decriminalization. And I've helped hundreds of clients, literally hundreds of clients, navigate the prior decriminalized world and move into the legal world, starting in 2015, when medical became legal in California. And with me here is Sabrina Lillani, who is the sole owner and principal of Uncle Green. And also here is Kareem Ali, who's her husband and business advisor. Kareem is a, not only the spouse, but a business advisor to Sabrina, and is a real estate developer in the Porterville area, and has quite an extensive experience buying properties and adding, refurbishing them, getting tenants in place, and creating a really great retail environment throughout the Porterville area. Sabrina herself has been in Porterville with the spooky Halloween superstore for going on 17 years now. So her professional experience is really ideally suited. If, I'm sure all of us have been into a Halloween store. We're one week away from Halloween, so you've all seen how crazy those stores can be. And I can't think of a better parallel to the amount of people that you can see in a cannabis retail dispensary than a Halloween store. So obviously, it will be a lot more regulated and organized. But Sabrina has a real wealth of business experience, and she owns several other businesses as well. And so the retail experience she brings to the table is really ideally suited for cannabis. So some of the, some of the qualities that set us apart are, as I mentioned, Sabrina's minority woman-owned. I think that's really important in our industry. Again, as a white male in the cannabis industry, I can tell you that there are too few and far between minority and women involved in the industry, and we need a lot more of them. And as a really experienced business person, Sabrina is really ideally suited for this. We, I talked about being vertically integrated. So what that means, in case you aren't aware, Sabrina is also the owner of nine cannabis licenses in Woodlake, seven of which are cultivation, one is manufacturing, and one is distribution. So being vertically integrated will allow Uncle Green to actually produce flour, or pre-rolls, or manufactured products through their manufacturing and cultivation licenses, and also use their distribution license to get the product to the store here in Porterville. If you're not familiar, all cannabis products have to go through a licensed distributor, who are then charged with having the products tested. And the distributor is what is, who is charged with making sure it's packaged, labeled, tested, and everything is ready to go before it gets to a licensed dispensary. So they'll be able to own that whole chain, that whole supply chain with respect to their products. And so that, that brand, excuse me, that brand of products will be local within Tulare County, because you're going from Woodlake to Porterville. So adding this component is a really important piece in cannabis. It's extremely expensive to be in cannabis. It's extremely, it's highly regulated and taxed, as you all know. And so the simpler you can make that process and own that supply chain, the better it is for the business to be successful, which will allow it to stand apart from some competitors. It also allows them to bring some of those savings to the consumers. So those are two really important factors that I think set us apart. Also, with Kareem's business experience and his real estate development, it's a really fascinating combination of this, I want to say, power couple. Because he is, you know, he's already talking about potentially buying the theater across the street from this location and revitalizing that Second Street location, bringing, as the gentleman from Bloom Farms mentioned, anybody who gets a license here is going to bring people to your city. But I think that location is really idyllic for development on Second Street, just one block off a real high visibility and retail location on Main Street. And then really growing the retail business and developing that street further is a really exciting, I think, opportunity. And last but not least, I would say, you know, having somebody with my expertise in this industry, all, what I used to do was get people permits and licenses. But now, almost exclusively, we are helping with compliance. And that's pretty much all I do every day, is helping businesses be compliant from the start. And so I've developed standard operating procedures. Actually, can you go to the second slide now, please? Thank you. And this gets us into this location. So our approach to operating a safe and successful business really comes down to a lot, a few variables. Location of the building, the security, your standard operating procedures, obviously the personnel you hire, and having somebody like me and my firm be able to help these companies start from ground zero. It is an incredibly difficult task to be compliant in this industry. And that's why we have so many people that aren't, because it's very costly and it's really hard to do. So the best thing you can do is, you need capital to weather the storm, and you need professionals who know what they're doing to help lay the foundation. So if you look at, obviously, this is a conceptual design on the interior on the left. You know, they want to do something very bright and modern, but, you know, depending on when they get their license, you know, those decisions are still yet to be made. But the layout is pretty set, if you look at the right-hand side of that slide. So one of the most important things about running a safe and successful business is the flow of your customers. And I've advised 100 clients on this. You know, I have, I have a lot of clients that are retail companies. And this building and layout is really set, is really set up perfectly for a good flow of traffic, control. You don't want a completely open layout, right? You need to control the amount of people you have in the store portion that are purchasing. It's almost like if you've ever been into an Apple Store. You want to have a bud tender who's coming into the waiting room after the waiting, after the people have been checked in and made sure that they're 21 and over, or have a medical card. So once that's established, they wait in the front waiting room until a bud tender is available. When a bud tender is available, they come and they escort the customer or customer group, say it's a husband and wife, into the store area where they go through and get educated, make their purchases. Then the bud tender will escort them back out and then bring another group in. So you don't want just people milling around. That's a big no-no and something you really want to be careful with when it comes to security. And then you'll see behind the store area is where all the limited access is. So you have your receiving area, which is where distributors will come, and you'll be able to bring in their products. And then you have the safe and secure room, which is where cash and other high-value products will be kept. So another, another component to keeping this really safe and successful is a banking solution. I have been really involved with a banking solution called Dama Financial. They have a text-to-pay solution, they have armored car pickup, and all of that really limits the amount of cash that we have on hand, which then therefore limits the ability or lessens the likelihood of criminal activity. I should also say the location of this building is really ideal, because it's not a standalone building, and it's not on a corner. So really, the only secure points that you have to protect are the front and the back. So it really limits the ingress and egress issues you might have with security. And also, there's no onsite parking. So we have three really big public parking lots right near this, which is, again, perfect for this location. You don't have one, one location where all the customers would be milling around. We'll, of course, have security who will monitor the sidewalk and the parking areas occasionally to make sure everything is going well, and obviously to check people in to make sure that they have proper identification to get in. But all of those things can, you know, taking it, there's, I could go on and on. There's so much that goes into what makes a successful and secure operation. But those are just some of them, along with the 17 standard operating procedures that I have personally put together over the last seven years to help cannabis companies start with proper compliance from day one. If you can go to the third slide, please? And so to kind of, you know, to wrap up with a couple of the other outstanding items, which has to do with the proposed community benefits. You know, Sabrina has been a business owner downtown for 17 years, so she gets the beautification. She gets the customer experience. She knows what it takes to be successful. She's battling a billion-dollar company in spirit Halloween and being successful for 17 years. And so she's vested and invested in making this, this location really nice and bringing people to the Second Street area. And so you can see with the facade beautification, they want to do, you know, more plants and more trees. Again, Kareem is interested in potentially developing the theater across the street. So this could be a real destination point, not just Main Street, Porterville, but bringing people all the way, you know, to Second Street, which then, to the gentleman before us's point, will bring more, more consumers into town, provide point, will bring more consumers into town, provide more retail experience for neighboring retailers. A lot of city councils have looked at this as a real negative, bringing in dispensaries. And, you know, we've kind of flipped that on its head. The way things are run and set up these days, and with professional, you know, professional ownership and advisors, these businesses generate income for neighboring businesses, and it's really important. And if you do it right with the right people, that will be the result. You know, like everybody, they want to give back to the community. Again, Sabrina, 17 years in Porterville, running a business, and she wants to, just like everybody else, provide veterans and senior discounts, community outreach and education, hiring exclusively from Porterville to the extent that's possible. And I think, you know, a goal of 75% Porterville residents as employees is a really good number. It's, as you all know, it's been the great resignation, so it's hard to hire people. So, you know, at a certain point, you have to get staffed, but the goal will always be to first hire Porterville residents. Our understanding of community benefit objectives is, I've worked on development agreements for a lot of companies over the years. I've helped draft them for cities, and so our clients really understand what that means and the giving back part. And they're obviously willing to enter into the development agreement if chosen for this permit. And they'll support all the community programs, local substance abuse programs, et cetera. So I think we'll address a little bit more of that in the Q and A. And I think that's it for our presentation. I really thank you for our time, and I have the, if this gentleman could hand out our three-year pro forma per the request, I think that satisfies our presentation requirements, unless there's any questions.
Counsel, did you have any questions with regard to the presentation, please?
Once again, do they currently live in Porterville?
No, Sabrina and her husband Kareem, they live in Biscilia. They had their children here, they've buried, you know, relatives in Porterville, and they've had their business here in Porterville, which meets the requirement under the RFP.
Do you have another question?
No.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Same question.
Then they're going to answer it after we go through our questions.
Pardon?
Go ahead and ask your question. Mill has another one.
No, no, I'm good. I just said, she has a question, we'll have our 15-minute.
Yes.
So I'll answer that, or ask that.
Go ahead and ask your question.
So is Uncle Green a franchise?
No, it's a California C Corporation that owns the nine licenses in Woodlake and would own this particular business as well. So it would be all within Tulare County.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wyrock, did you have a question?
No questions.
I don't have a question, but I will make a comment after reading all the proposals. I didn't know what a bud tender was till I started reading each one, each proposal. So I'm being educated here as well.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Describe the applicant's local business experience outside the cannabis industry and local employee count, as well as experience with audited payroll.
I'm going to let you actually hear from an applicant here, so I'll stop talking so much.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll still chime in.
I have experience of 17 years in a spooky Halloween, retail business of a spooky Halloween superstore, and I have locally nine employees, and I do all my payroll.
Sorry, that was 19 employees.
All together. Yeah, all over, all together. And I do have experience from, start from placing the order, setting up the whole store, and doing payrolls, finance, accounting. And I do have experience of audited payroll, because it is the requirement of my insurance company, it is the requirement of the insurance company for my business. And my kids are born, my both kids born in Ciara V Hospital, and as a longtime resident of Porterville, we like to, we always used to invest money in Porterville, so we have several businesses. And as my husband is the real estate investor, and we always buy properties and sell properties and doll properties in Porterville.
Yes, I'm Sabrina's husband. I'm a real estate developer. I developed several properties in Porterville, did several business in Porterville. Just a small example, Wally's Hardware on Olive Boulevard, I'm in Olive Avenue, 1365 West Olive. It was a big box store. I converted into eight different stores and brought eight businesses over there. It was shut down for two years, and we bought it in recession, 2008, and remodeled it and rehabbed it, and brought eight businesses, which provides about 40 jobs for people in Porterville. I developed 770 North Main Street, corner of Main Street and Henderson, the office building, which was rundown for a while and closed for a while, and we brought a family builder business over there. What they do, they help parents raise special-needs children, and they've been there for several years, and just a few months ago, they bought my building. Now they asked me to get a bigger building for them in Porterville, and I'm looking for a bigger building, because they grew their businesses. So what we do, we develop properties, and they bring more business, more jobs, that's what we do. She does the retail part of it, but I'm the developing part of it, you know, that's what I do. And without her help, I couldn't do it. She does all my payroll, she does all my bookkeeping, she does all my accounting, so I don't have to worry about nothing, I got the easy job, you know.
Thank you. Is there any more comment to this question? No? Thank you very much, please, councilmember.
Second question is, describe your local representative's experience inside the cannabis industry. We'll start with that one, okay?
I think we, I don't want to take too much of your time. I think we addressed that. She owns nine other cannabis licenses.
Right.
And seven of which are cultivation, one is manufacturing. And if you don't understand what that means, manufacturing means you can take the cannabis flower further and further refine it, either through oil or other means, and create edible products or drinks, et cetera. And so those are manufactured products. And then the distribution license as well. And then, of course, I should mention that I was also brought on, not as just legal counsel, but I should mention, I'm also an operator. So after, oh, after 10 years of giving advice in this industry, I made the, I'm not sure yet if it was the right decision or not, but I moved across the desk for myself, and I became an operator, which was one of the hardest things I've ever had to do, which taking advice for myself. But, so I own two delivery businesses, one in Lake Tahoe in Truckee, California, and one in Costa Mesa, California. So if they decide to proceed with a delivery business, I'll help advise them on that too, which we have perfected, I'd like to say, in the last four years. And as you can imagine, as a compliance attorney in cannabis in the state of California, we do everything right, so.
I'd like to add something.
Yes, Sabrina owns 10 licenses. We are 100% owner of all those licenses. We own our own property in Woodlake, which appraised for $30 million about three months ago. We made this, I remodeled that property, I rebuilt that property, I rehabbed that property from top to bottom. My experience speaks for itself, and if you guys ever want to see that appraisal, I have it with me, it was MAI-certified appraisal. The only reason we went to Woodlake, because Porterville doesn't allow cultivation. If they allow cultivation, we'd be the first person to apply for it. And our product, we locally grown seed to sell into Tulare County, and we control all aspects of that product, so it'll be safe, secure, and tested according to the California law, and we follow all the metric system. I don't know, other people never talk about metric system. There's a metric system, it's called metric system from California. The state of California made that system. If you follow the metric system, everything you do is right. That's made for cannabis businesses. Without following the metric system, you cannot do cannabis business legally. That metric system makes you legal, legit, tested, and highly legal.
Well, all of that, you just answered the rest of that question, so, thank you.
Okay. Go on to number three, councilmember Tate.
Describe your prior experience with community benefit programs, and detail any proposed volunteer services, in-kind donations, and/or...
We like to, whenever we get the chance, we try to donate people. So we donate every month to Centuret Hospital and Children Valley Hospital, and we also donate 12% of our income to our church. We also help for canned foods, and we also help every year before Thanksgiving Day, the turkey drive too. And we plan to donate mental health and substance abuse program. And if we get the chance to get the license, we're gonna provide the low-cost cannabis to cancer patients and disabled veterans and low-income member of the community.
Since we grow our own cannabis, our cost is way below than anybody else. We can help any which way, the community we can. Our profit margin be way higher than anybody else. We got seven cultivation licenses. We got 120,000 square foot building, which is twice as big as Walmart growing facility in Woodlake. And we submit the license in our application, all our licenses are valid, and anybody wants to come see, visit our facility, they can, and they can see it looks like a pharmaceutical company, because we have to watch our quality, we can control the quality, and we can bring the best price to Porterville. We don't have to buy a lot of stuff from anywhere, we just bring from there to here.
Did you have another question? No? Okay. Councilmember Wyrock?
Question four, if you commence business in the city, where do you see your business in two years and in five years in terms of economic development?
Like we said, we like to get vertically integrated in the city of Porterville. Like I said, we can provide City of Porterville with the best of the best product and make community relationship. We can provide classes for people to educate, we can provide classes for high school students and stuff about cannabis use and benefits, and the advantage of not using it and using it for the community. And we've been doing business, retail business, for several years. She's the best of the best, what she does in retail business, and I think we can make this work better than anybody else.
In terms of the economic development, I think, you know, we've given you the pro forma for the next three years. Obviously, it's hard to read a crystal ball whether or not you're going to add more retail locations to Porterville, that would certainly impact that. But as far as economic development, you know, I think, you know, speaking for Kareem and Sabrina, they want to continue to develop, not just get this license, but further develop other projects in Porterville that can go hand-in-hand and continue to drive more retail experience to the Second Street area, to the Main Street area, and to Porterville in general. And I think I mentioned it earlier, they've been competing with one of the largest Halloween stores in the world for the last 17 years, and they continue to thrive. And so I think that speaks for their capital investment and commitment here, and also, you know, their drive to succeed. So in terms of economic development, if Porterville were to open up some licenses, I think that's really what we're looking at, is to continue to be more and more vertically integrated, because they can't grow enough cannabis in one facility to supply all of the consumers that will be coming through these stores. That will supply the Uncle Green brand, and to the Bloom Farms representative's point, you have to provide a whole suite of products for consumers to really be interested in coming to your store. If it was just Uncle Green flower, you wouldn't have as many people as if you had all of the major brands along with it. So, but for economic development, I think this couple has just so much going for them, and they'll continue to be successful in and around Porterville, and this dispensary license will really, really take it to another level with their vertical integration. I think you had a few extra questions, right?
Yeah, two other questions. You currently supervise five or more full-time, part-time, or temporary employees? Yes?
Twenty.
Twenty, thank you. Can you provide evidence of you completing your supervisory two-hour training for yourself within the last two years prior to tonight's date at 6:00 PM by next Tuesday's city council meeting, training in compliance with SB 1343?
I don't believe we did that. I believe one of our manager did that, and we hand out all the brochures to all of employees, and we have a conference meeting with them and educate them.
Okay. So you don't supervise any of those 20 employees?
Well, those 20 employees are spread across multiple companies.
Understood.
And so there aren't five or more in any one of those, but in the aggregate, she supervises 20. So she has four different, or, well, I guess, multi, 10, nine licenses plus, you know, three other businesses. So I don't believe she is required to do that, but we can provide you whatever information you need, because it's less than five employees per location, per business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Was that it? I thought there were two other questions that the council wanted to ask.
Did you already ask them? You've asked them, haven't you?
Yeah, I just asked them. Related to SB 1343, supervisory training for harassment in the workplace for supervisors to our class for employees that you may supervise, yes?
I guess the other one was franchise, which you asked, and then the other one was, where do you get your products? So I think we've, if we haven't answered that, I'm happy to go into that. If you're satisfied, that's fine.
I think you explained it when you said from seed to store and everything in between, or seed to sell.
Well, I'll just take this extra minute here to just clarify. So through their distribution license, through their distribution license, that's how they're able to get products from other vendors, not just their own. So, you know, if you think about it as a grocery store model, you have, you know, 1,000 different products in there. Well, a dispensary will be very similar. Yes, they will be providing their products, the Uncle Green branded products, but they'll also, through their distribution license, be able to go out and get other major brands throughout the state to come through their distribution license and end up in their retail store. Okay? Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay. Now, we will go with Main Street apothecary.
May we allow us to pass these out?
Fernando.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Mayor Flores, Councilmembers Tate, Councilmember Stowe, and Councilmember Wyrock. We want to say good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present our vision of Porterville's only wholly local cannabis dispenser. My name is Dr. Massey Massakian. I am the CEO of Main Street Apothecary. And I am joined this evening by my partner and chief operating officer, Mr. Eddie Patterson. Mr. Eddie Patterson is a 30-year resident of Porterville. He currently owns and operates five local businesses. He's raised his family here. His kids all graduated high school locally. And recently, one of his daughters moved back, was married, and is going to raise a family in Porterville. Myself, I'm a 40-year resident, a graduate from Manatchee High School. I then earned a bachelor's degree at Fresno State University. And I furthered my education by earning a doctorate degree in chiropractic and moved back to Porterville to serve this community. Here, I've met my wife of 17 years. I have two beautiful children. And someday, they will graduate high school here locally as well. I'm the sole proprietor of Massakian Spine Care Center, which is located at 83 North Main Street. And I currently own two other businesses in town with Mr. Patterson and our wives. We own Osteo Strong, and we also own 2.0 Coffee Company. All the businesses that I own are in the health and wellness field. And that's very important to us because that's our vision for Main Street Apothecary. When I first heard the name Apothecary, I didn't like it, to be honest with you. Mr. Patterson's previous dispensary ownership was named the Apothecary. So, I figured he had some emotional connection to the name. To be honest with you, I'd never heard the term before. So, when I looked it up, I fell in love with the name immediately. You see, apothecary is defined as an old-school pharmacy, a place where one would go to get something to help them. You see, in those days, it wasn't always a prescription. Oftentimes, it was a cream, it was a rub, or maybe even something you would drink. Well, that's the vision that we have for Porterville's only wholly local dispensary. This is also how it sets us apart from the other dispensaries. Sure, we know that it's a recreational license, and we will cater those individuals as well. But we'll also have talk with the doc appointments. Because of my working relationship with Porterville's healthcare providers, I will be able to communicate directly with one's doctor to determine which cannabis product would be best suited for their particular condition. No other dispensary in town can say that. The opioid crisis began in the 90s. And during that time, we saw an increased number of prescriptions. And since then, the national death rates from prescription opioid pain reliever overdoses quadrupled from the years 1999 to 2010. In fact, in 2019, 71% of all overdose deaths were directly attributed to opioids. So, the patients, the nation, needed to find a new source of pain relief. Due to this, not only did I have a large influx of new patients trying to control their pain naturally, but I also started fielding tons of questions about multiple cannabis products. THC, CBD, combo creams, gummies for sleep, pain, anxiety, tinctures, sublinguals. I was asked multiple questions. So, it was then that I started having conversations with several local doctors regarding their opinion on whether they would recommend it to their patient base. So, I have already started the dialogue. I've already cultivated these relationships over the last 18 years that I feel confident that the local healthcare providers would prefer to refer their patients to a local doctor-owned facility. After a few short years in practice with the support from this community, Massakian Spine Care Center grew out of its previous location and necessitated a move. So, I asked a patient of mine, who happened to be a realtor, if she would find me a property, and I asked her to find it for me downtown. She looked at me like I was crazy. See, it was 2008. I kind of understand where she was coming from. See, in 2008, the city of Porterville was desperately trying to revitalize the downtown area. Before I moved downtown and purchased a building, I walked on Main Street from Olive to Morton, crossed the street, and I walked back on the other side of Main Street from Morton back to Olive. And I did that because I wanted to count how many vacant storefronts there were. Forty-eight percent. Forty-eight percent vacant storefronts at the time. My wife and I made a decision. We made a decision to be pioneers. We moved Massakian Spine Care Center, and we were the first business to relocate a growing business to Main Street. And since, since then, we have seen other businesses move downtown. I'm very proud to say that Massakian Spine Care now employs three doctors and multiple therapists, and we currently bring 1,800 patient visits downtown every month. And she said no one would follow me. So, I'm very patient, passionate about my community and the downtown area specifically. We could please move to slide number two. We have designed a beautiful dispensary at 83 North Main Street, a location it will share with Massakian Spine Care Center. We have thoughtfully created a discreet entrance located on the west side or back of the building with only an entrance on Main Street to the upper retail floor. This was done thoughtfully. The reason why? Our children live in this town. Our children are gonna be walking up and down Main Street. And Main Street Apothecary prefers to not put it in their face. We believe that parents should be able to answer those questions at home organically and not because they just walked by a cannabis dispenser. You see, the beautiful renderings of the upgrades made to both the front and back of the buildings? And Main Street Apothecary is aware, due to the many city council meetings that we have attended, that the city has a plan to someday add a pedestrian walkway behind the buildings on the west side of Main Street. A newly renovated building with 24-hour security would be a wonderful addition to that project. We could go to the third page, please? Our retail space is designed different. As you can see, the inside renderings reflect our theme of an old-school pharmacy. Most dispensaries' floor place all their product on the retail floor, similar to what you might see at a local convenience store. Main Street Apothecary's budtenders will each have one display item of all of our products. This cus- the customer can then inspect that item, but all prepackaged products for sale will be located in a secure area with limited access. This ensures a more personal, one-on-one, customer-based buying experience while also deterring theft. Both transactional theft and both smash-and-grab crimes that are becoming more popular. Our staff will be 100% local hire, reflective of the cultural diversity of this community. They will be trained on-site. They will be managed by the ownership group initially, and then eventually promoted from within, based on merit, into management positions. Main Street Apothecary does support women in business. Currently, all three of my local businesses have female management. Our success will be predicated on the following. Number one, the ownership's attention to detail. The ownership group will be directly involved with all aspects of the dispensary. This will ensure that the vision of our mission statement will be fulfilled. Number two, we will reach out to the many contacts and relationships that we have spent a lifetime cultivating. We believe that these relationships will be paramount to our success. Number three, we'll make a customer service a priority. Main Street Apothecary, Apothecary staff will be friendly, helpful, and compassionate. We will create not just a beautiful, but safe environment. It will be well-lit. We have a full lighting plan. We have 24-hour security, background checks on all employees, an extremely detailed security plan devised by a local security company. This plan addresses every last detail, including but not limited to video surveillance, third-party monitoring, motion detection, burglar alarms, panic buttons, fire security, transactional security, inventory security, just to name a few. We will also work with the city to illuminate the crosswalk that is adjacent to the city parking lot. This building is also equipped with fire suppression sprinklers on all four levels and are inspected yearly. As outlined on pages 30 and 31 of our application, startup costs are estimated to be approximately $600,000. $450,000 in construction costs and $150,000 in inventory, in initial inventory. These funds have already been secured, along with three months of operating costs. Main Street's gross, Apothecary's gross revenue projections, based upon the population of Porterville and the surrounding communities, and the number of dispensaries already in town, are as follows. Year one, $2 million in gross revenues, generating a tax revenue of $140,000 for the city. Year two, $2.5 million in gross revenue, generating a city tax revenue of $175,000. And in year three, $3 million in gross revenues, generating a city tax revenue of $210,000. The tax revenue for the city generated by all three of the dispensaries will go toward improving Porterville by putting the money back into this community. We, as an ownership group, have been donating money back to this town for years. Now, some of the donations are done annually because we know certain entities needs the continuing support. But mostly, our donations will depend upon where Porterville needs it most. Because we live in the city, we work in the city, we move throughout the city, we will organically discover needs. Sometimes, it's Porterville Adult Services. Sometimes, it's the Helping Hands of Porterville. Sometimes, it's St. Anne's Food Pantry, just to name a few of the entities that we continue to donate to through the years. In addition to the monetary donations that we make, we invest a lot of our time. We have served on many civic committees, including one put together by the city of Porterville of downtown building owners. And this committee was formed to help brainstorm ideas on ways in which to prove the downtown district. We are also involved in youth sports. I have currently coached a youth flag football team and have coached a local Little League team and a youth flag football team for the past four years. In addition to coaching, myself, along with a group of my friends, have donated our time and money trying to improve these local fields that desperately need the help. No one has asked us to do this, and we just saw a need, and we wanted to help. Our businesses have continually supported many of the events that occur in Porterville. We constantly put booths in the Iris Festival, local health fairs. And just two weeks ago, we had a 2.0 coffee booth at the recent Taste of Porterville event. In addition to the previously outlined city tax revenue that will be created by the success of Main Street Apothecary, we will offer the city an additional dollar amount on a sliding scale as we have outlined in our application. Those monies can be allocated in a manner that the city deems best. And finally, all the money that is generated by Main Street Apothecary will stay in Porterville. We are residents of Porterville, and we want to see this town grow. We want to see the town improve. And ultimately, we would like to build a long-lasting, mutually beneficial relationship with the city, while putting a respectable face on an industry that has seen its share of corruption. Porterville would be proud to have a local cannabis dispensary operated by hard-working individuals with high levels of integrity and morality. Once again, we want to thank you for your time and your consideration this evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Does Council have any questions?
Nope. They answered mine. We both live in Porterville, so.
I have one question.
Please, go ahead.
This is the first proposal that I've seen with two stories. And I'm just wondering, I, I see that you have a sales counter down below.
Yes.
But there'll be no ADA access to the second floor?
No. We are gonna offer everything upstairs that we offer downstairs, so we would not have to order any ADA access to the upper floor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tate, do you have a question?
That's what I was gonna ask. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions to the information that was presented. I've heard a lot of Manatchee this evening. I like that. Okay. Now, we'll go to the second part of the interview. Describe the applicant's local business experience outside the cannabis industry and local employee count, as well as experience with audited payroll.
Mr. Patterson, who currently owns five businesses in town, his ventures have been a little more diverse. His businesses have ranged from construction, real estate, investing, to cattle ranching. He currently employs 30 local residents, and two of his businesses we co-own together, along with our wives, Osteo Strong and 2.0 Coffee Company. Osteo Strong is an international brand that before Porterville was only in big cities. Osteo Strong is an intersection of science, technology, and healthcare. What it can do for the body is truly amazing, and it does it naturally. We had to bring it to Porterville. In 2019, we opened up Osteo Strong Porterville, its first rural community location. And you'll never guess what happened. Osteo Strong Porterville became the fastest-growing Osteo Strong in the history of the company. That doesn't happen without the support of this community. 2.0 Coffee Company is a Porterville dream. There's not another place like it within 100 miles. A local coffee shop that specializes in only serving healthy ingredients. It's widely understood to achieve health, it's done on an 80/20 principle. 80% diet and 20% exercise. So, if that is true, then health is 80% what you eat, drink, and then every time you put something into your mouth, you will either upgrade or downgrade your body. That's where the name 2.0 comes from. Organic, farm-to-table, fresh-eating experience, thoughtfully prepared to give the most delicious, healthy meal possible, and all this to make Porterville a healthier place. I am the sole proprietor of Massakian Spine Care Center located at 83 North Main Street. Massakian Spine Care Center currently employs three doctors to serve this community. And because of the steady flow of business it brings downtown, it will continue to be an anchor business for this community for decades to come. And I currently employ 25 local residents. I've never had any experience with an audited payroll, however, I have operated and navigated through a highly regulated profession like the healthcare industry for the past 18 years. We will use our attention to detail in all areas of our dispensary while being fully transparent and cooperative with both state and local entities. We look at this as a business endeavor and a partnership. So, we'll consider this a business ship. And Main Street Apothecary wants to be in business ship with the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Stowe?
Describe your and the local representatives' experience inside the cannabis industry.
Mr. Patterson brings a wealth of knowledge, having owned and operated cannabis industry in the past. Through many of his protocols and procedures, we have operated, we have developed an operational plan. This detailed plan outlines how Main Street Apothecary will carry out its mission statement of providing a wide range of cannabis products that aid in health and wellness. We are committed to providing a safe and open, comfortable environment for all of our customers. We will only provide the highest-quality products. Our staff will be well-trained in applying our mission of creating a respectful, compassionate, and safe environment for all of our customers. We currently have a list of suppliers as well as distributors, as you've heard other people up here mention, and that will only supply prepackaged cannabis products grown on the state matrix. This allows each product to be tracked and traced. Even though the industry is ever-changing, we will diligently stay informed and in compliance with all state and local laws. Our policy to eradicate corruption is deter, deter, deter. We have a plan in place to deter theft and corruption, and Main Street Apothecary will operate with the utmost of integrity and morality, and I, as a CEO, will personally see to that.
I probably missed it, but I think there's only one part of this question that I was gonna ask. Your supplier.
Yeah, we have a, a list of suppliers, both locally and also out of Southern California. We use a distribution specialist, just like they mentioned, where you, it's kind of like, it's like they mentioned a grocery store. Save Mart doesn't buy from Campbell's Soup. Save Mart buys from a distributor that brings Campbell's Soup to there. The cannabis industry is similar in that fact, and we will use some of the distributors that Mr. Patterson used in the past to get us started here in Porterville.
Okay. Councilmember Tate?
Describe your prior experience with community benefits programs? And in detail of proposed volunteer services, in-kind donations, and/or? volunteer services, in-kind donations, and/or...
When we read this question, to be honest, we thought it was kind of silly. Main Street Apothecary will continue to do what it's always done. We give back to this community. We always have. With great reward comes great responsibility. We feel a need to help. We want to help. We want to see this committee improve. We've grown up here, our kids are going to grow up here. In addition to the taxes generated by the success of Main Street Apothecary, we have also committed to donate additional monies yearly, as outlined in our application, to aid in areas that the city deems most in need. I will say that this group is particularly passionate about youth sports in particular. We would love to see the fields in this area greatly improved. This would allow Porterville the opportunity to host more tournaments and sporting events that would bring revenue to our local hotels, restaurants, and retail stores. It's also our contention that youth sports teach more than just athletics. It teaches young individuals about self-discipline, commitment, working together, sportsmanship, and for some, due to the socioeconomic area in which we live, those are the only examples of the positive attributes that they will be exposed to. But with the rising cost, youth sports can be expensive and unattainable for some. Main Street Apothecary would like to help with those funds to allow all who would like to participate in youth sports an opportunity. Whether it's youth sports, infrastructure, or downtown beautification, Main Street Apothecary will support the city with whatever direction that they choose to go.
Ask you all the same question. Are you, are you connected to franchise?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening. Question four. If you commence business in the city, where do you see your business in two years and in five years in terms of economic development?
In two years, we see the Main Street Apothecary, through all of its local contacts and relationships, having surpassed the other out-of-town dispensaries, thus creating the most revenue for our city. And in five years, I see our business ship growing and us having gained the confidence of not only this customer base, but also the city council. And in five years, I see the city council awarding its only manufacturing license to its only wholly local dispensary, and this would allow the local guys to vertically integrate and operate a seed-to-sale business. This model allows us to lower our costs and pass those savings on to the local residents while creating more local jobs and more local revenue. We, Main Street Apothecary, have the capability and the funds to do this. And lastly, one-hundred percent of all the funds would stay here in Porterville while building a local brand that we could market throughout the state. All of our businesses and efforts are for this community. Every business that I own will be in Porterville for Porterville.
Thank you. Do you currently supervise five or more full or part-time or temporary employees?
Yes.
Can you provide evidence of completing the supervisory two-hour training for yourself within the last two years prior to today's date and the beginning of this meeting by next Tuesday's council meeting? And again, that's training that's mandated by SB thirteen forty-three?
Yes, I will. I'm not required to do so in my current profession, but I will have it done before the meeting next week.
So it isn't completed to date?
No, I, I didn't know I was needed to, or I'm not required to by law from my profession.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you very much. That concludes this portion of the interview. And now we're going to, the scoring, and council members will be submitting their scores within the half hour, and that information will be made available at the first council meeting in November. I want to thank each and every applicant that has been here tonight. I know it's sometimes a difficult task and a difficult tour and the questions that have been asked. I will say that we did look at the proposals. We did see them, and there was a lot of information, and we thank you for that. I thank you for that because there's a lot of effort that went into each, to articulate each, each question, each thing that you had to submit, the financials, the plannings, the plans, and everything that was attached to it. Thank you. Just know that we did have that time to review the applications, the proposals, before tonight. And does Council have anything to add to that?
I agree.
No? Okay. Do we adjourn the meeting and then send it in to you, okay?
That is my...
All right. That is seven fifty-three. This meeting is adjourned.
Within the half hour?
Yes.